We call a meeting to order in the Stanford Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's the Combed Guy?
No, he's not Combed Guy, he's somebody else. He left that way? Madam Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Trustee Bell.
Here.
Trustee Brewer.
Here.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Jazinski.
Here.
Trustee Todd.
Here.
Trustee D.
Here.
Okay. Approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the board meeting of August 25th, 2020. So move.
Second.
The move by trustee Bell, second by trustee Todd. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, are we, did we supposed to go to executive session? Did we use the mic to call the place? Are we supposed to go into executive session? Especially if you can tell that, or...
I didn't hear anybody saying anything about executive session, so that's why.
Well, you didn't motion it, so, um, yeah, you just skipped over.
All right, well then we're going to executive session. Let me get through with the motion that's on the floor.
Trustee Brewer, yes. Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Trustee D.
Yes. Motion carried. While I still have, I'll just go to Adam B., then I'll go back. Motion to approve the proceedings for the committee meeting of the whole for September 1st, 2020.
So, second.
The move, the move by trustee Todd, second by trustee Jazinski. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer. Yes. Trustee D.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll accept the motion to go into recess. Um, I guess it would be, except, sorry, to go into recess into executive session for the purpose of pending litigation and, I guess, collective bargaining matters and personnel matters.
So move.
Mayor.
Move by trustee Brewer, second by trustee Allen. Any question? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee D.
Yes.
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 Motion carried. We'll be back, um, after the executive session. Executive session. It is? Okay, I will accept a motion to reconvene. So move.
Second.
The move by trustee Bell, second by trustee Jazinski. Madam Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Trustee Brewer, here. Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer, here. Trustee Jazinski.
Here.
Trustee D.
Yes.
Motion carried. Um, public comment. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker is allowed an opportunity, one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may that engage in debate, comment, class, and rebuttal. If you come up, please state your name. All right, moving along since we have no one. Next one's report of officers. The mayor's report. Um, this Saturday at approximately 5:00, um, all the way until around 10:15 this Saturday, we're gonna have the evening out. Uh, in Saw Village, annual corn and dog roast with a twist. We're gonna have movie under the stars. It'll be like a drive-in, uh, movie-type setting. Um, the, um, corn and dog roast will start at around 5:00 in the evening. And, um, after that, we're gonna have the movie. And you'll be driving your cars and it'll be in, you'll be in, uh, social distancing inside your car. Your speaker will be the speaker in your car, so you'll be able to, um, I guess it's a Wi-Fi type thing or Bluetooth mechanism that you'll be able to hear through your car speakers. So therefore, the distancing, uh, you won't be outside, uh, you'll be inside your car, hopefully. Um, and then we're trying to work and see if we're gonna have any speakers outside for those that, that don't. But those that don't and sit there, it'll be so far back, it'll be kind of far, far back. So if you know anyone that, that's gonna be coming to this, please ask them to drive to the, uh, the drive-in. It's gonna be like a drive-in, so if you want to. But now the corn and dog roast will start at 5:00. And, uh, those that have never been there, we cook the corn. We cook the corn and, um, you know, serve it right there. The hot dogs will be, you know, just served. Then we'll have pop and water, um, and chips for, for sale. And we'll have a DJ. Uh, I was trying to get a bouncy house, but then I was told that, uh, which makes sense, that it's a sanitary process and with the COVID, you got to clean it out every time someone goes in. So we fore, I forego that and said, okay, that's all right. We'll just have music. Uh, we're gonna, it's gonna be, uh, census will be out there and voter registration table will be out there also for, uh, people that, uh, want, hopefully, people that haven't filled the census out, uh, will be there. And then, uh, voter registration, those that haven't been registered get to come out and, uh, get registered to vote. Uh, the next thing is the census. Uh, I talked to the clerk today. I think we're like 60%. So, and, uh, please, guys, we, and if this is anyone that hears this, uh, we have till the end of this month. And this money we're gonna lose, it's around $1400 and $1500 per year, per person, is not counted. And that's what we'll lose for the next 10 years, because the next census will be 10 years from now. So I'm hoping that we can, um, hopefully get a mad rush in, because I would like to get those numbers from 60% to 90%. Because I hate to keep money or put money on the table or leave money on the table and not be able to get it. So we need to get our friends, families, whoever it is that has, now just ask them, have you, have you filled out the census yet? If they say no, please have them come up Saturday between 5:00 and 10:00. And, or between 5:00 and 8:00, you won't be able to see after 9:00 and 10:00, between 5:00 and 8:00, come out and fill the census out, because we need all, everyone in the village to, uh, to fill that out. Okay, that being said, um, next item is, uh, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I truly appreciate your appeal and outreach on behalf of the census, because we are lacking considerably and we have basically one and a half more weeks in order to really do a push so that our numbers can increase. What I would like to talk to you about today also is, today was the first day that individuals who were interested in running for municipal office in the year 2021 could pass their petitions. And I took the liberty of making limited copies of the entire candidate's guide for those who are interested in running, um, or being a candidate. But then also, the book is confusing. And it says one thing, then it says another, then it says another. So what I've done was, I consolidated the large 66-page manual and I'm presenting candidates this little sheet here, this little packet here. And in this packet, it basically provides the forms that they would need, why they would need the forms, and, and all of that information, just to give them some information. We've also updated the website, and this information is on the website as well, so that people can go to the website, download additional forms, or if you know how to change the PDF and convert it to a Word and/or know how to edit it, then you can type up your petitions rather than to write it out and everything. Speaking of the website, we have a couple of departments who have endeavored to update their websites. And, and I'm gonna invite you just to visit our website. I mean, it's still not pristine and the very best, but I think that the fire chief and the police chief have done a yeoman's job in terms of updating their piece of our world, and so I invite you to go and visit that as well. The mayor mentioned, uh, the corn and dog roast a little earlier. And I know that trustees, you know that I've been sending out messages to you and letting you know how much it could cost. And we ended up going with a different vendor, because we could not raise as much as, um, the first one intended. But just know that because of charitable individuals, in fact, we have five in the room who helped us to collect $3,000. And so, I mean, um, that's really, really, really impressive, and I would think that you would want to. But that was really lacking people. I just want to, no enthusiasm at all.
Well, that didn't even true.
But you know what? It's not too late. If you feel that, you know, you missed an opportunity, please avail yourself. And I will, you know, accept that from you. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you. Um, village attorney, Mike McGrath.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, your order was.
Okay, village engineer, Mr. Jim Zarnik. I think there's a mic right there. Matter of fact, um, you guys could use the other mic that's just for your reports. Oh, he's got one over there, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to give an update on the I-394 water main replacement project. Oh, thank you. The boring under I-394 was finished earlier last week. The contractor completed the water main connection east of the highway. The contractor also installed the remainder of the construction west of I-394 this week. Pressure testing was also completed. Remaining work is cut caps, chlorination, abandonment of the old water main under, including that under I-394, and restoration. And the project construction is on schedule. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Village administrator, Jerry Hurd.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had a wonderful opportunity, uh, last week, and I'm not sure if you noticed him in the back of the village board meeting last week. There was a gentleman back there named Kevin Posey. And Kevin grew up in Saw Village, if you know Kevin. He has some wonderful ideas, has a lot of enthusiasm. He's asked, if possible, to address our committee on the first Tuesday of the month. And he has some interesting ideas about economic development, uh, solar energy, and about, uh, supporting Saw Village. So I'll bring that to the clerk. But Kevin was a, really, an outgoing, personally, a man in the back of the hall last meeting. And I think it'd be a great opportunity for us to meet him and see what he has to say. Um, last week, the attorney and I were able to meet with, uh, Public Works Employee Union. And we had talked about the larger projects that we've talked to in committee. But we also had a chance to discuss the grievance issue that we've had with our Public Works and to correct these issues and possibly move forward. At our last committee meeting, uh, we discussed the cable franchise contract. And there were some questions about, uh, cable costs and the implementation, not for residents, but for actually village use. Uh, I have four of those answers to the mayor. And if possible, uh, the cable company as well as our attorney have asked if we can get this on our next board agenda in October for approval or questions for discussion, at least if we could. And then, um, a couple of weeks ago, we had asked this board about the possibility of going out for bid for our neighborhood service inspectors. We talked about it a little bit at committee meeting and it went off the tracks. But what we wanted to do was put a new RFP out for our inspection services as a whole. So I recently received those, um, I made some small changes. Our attorney has reviewed them, and I'd like to get them out from the clerk to the board for your approval and for, for your opportunity to look at them and make any changes that you think is necessary. And then we can start that program discussion on that also. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, um, the, um, cable company, are they coming out for, you said, for answers? I mean, questions that, in other words, before we sign the contract, can we at least, you know, discuss it with them before we do that?
Sure. I'll ask them to come out to our next committee meeting and, and ask some questions from the board.
We can put them on the, we can put them on the agenda for the next committee.
Sure. That'd be our, that'd be our third person talking, so.
Uh, maybe fourth, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Um, attorney's report, you know. Okay, Finance and Administration Director, Michelle Weister.
Good, good evening, everyone. Um, I have a treasurer's report on the cash balances. As of 9/17/2020. The total available cash for, for operations was $2,767,118. Corporate account was $226,611. Reserve account was $819,000. Water and sewer was $918,962. Water sewer easy pay account was $296,941. The senior center account, $5,604. The line of credit is still at $500,000. And the restricted funds. Total cash for use is $1,449,613. The CN account has $142,519. The DEA account has $154,905. The SV housing account, $1,428. TIF 1 and 4, $573, $271. The total account, $13,769. The holding money laundering account, $18,244. Spending drug account, $24,292. Spending money laundering, $899. And the motor fuel tax account, $520,000, $520,286, excuse me. And that concludes, uh, the cash balances as of 9/17/2020. My report as finance director for the village. The finance department is requesting approval of payroll and benefits in the amount of $1,408,953.90 for the pay date of 9/11/2020. Accounts payable registered dated 9/22/2020 in the amount of $218,914.83. The forensic audit and independent audit under the supervision of the interim finance director and treasurer is progressing. I had the opportunity to sit with the director of community development and review the application for the CARES Act COVID-19 relief grant. We sent in a letter of intent and accompanying documents to the county on 9/18/2020. The total amount that we are eligible for has been finalized in the amount of $587,027.95. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, fire department, fire chief, Kevin Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The fire department responded to, uh, 84 calls for the service period of September 4th, 2020 through September 17th, 2020. There was one call for a possible structure fire, which turned out to be a false alarm. Um, I do want to encourage everybody, as the weather starts to change, uh, we remind you to be cautious while driving and walking around the wet leaves, because it can be very slippery. Also, be aware of, as we begin, as the weather begins to change and it get cold, make sure we change and check in our furnaces and our filters. And, um, if anyone needs, uh, smoke detectors or anything like that, if you know anyone, we have about 10 of them at the firehouse that we can give out to the public. Uh, we just want to make sure that everyone is, uh, safe as we switch in seasons. Uh, and that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, police department chief, Melton White.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, village board. Um, our calls for service report for the, uh, last period, the last two weeks, from, uh, September 8th through September 22nd, the police department responded to more than 410 calls for, uh, calls for service. Uh, during that same time period, officers made, uh, eleven arrests. Um, gotta bring attention to, if you get a chance to pass by the police department on the west side of the building, um, you'll see a new sign, uh, just under the childcare sign. Uh, it's the internet purch, it's the internet purchase exchange location. With the assistance of the Public Works Department, this purchase exchange location. In recent months, more Americans have taken advantage of shopping via internet. Many of the purchases involve monetary transactions between private citizens. The police department is encouraging all citizens, all residents to conduct these type of transactions safely at the police station, where surveillance cameras can capture images of all involved parties. This safe zone does not require that an officer be present for the interaction, but will obviously deter criminal activity. Again, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my report.
Thank you, please. The next report, um, I'll read is from, um, Alan Verbick, the, uh, as the director. It says, "Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, board of trustees, and residents of Saw Village. EMA responds to three calls for service as of today's date. Uh, auto accident at 1709 Saw Trail, possible structure fire, 208 Ark Lane, and a medical call at 907 Lower Lane. Uh, thank you, Mayor, Madam Clerk, and board of trustees and residents of Saw Village. This concludes my report." Alan, EMA director. Public Works, uh, director, Kevin Weller.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as of 9/8 through 9/22, um, staff spin out cutting grass still. It's starting to slow down a little bit, hopefully, with the weather and the change in the season here. But 10 out of 49 locations, village-owned locations, were cut. Uh, branches from storm and regular pickup had to be out by 9:13 to be picked up. The chipper crew will be out making its final pass. All piles have to be pulled to the parkway to be picked up. The next pickup will be in May of '21, so if anybody was putting out after-buoy, you need to remove those back. Um, the boom truck we used for, uh, cutting branches and streetlight repairs, uh, we had an electrical problem on that. We had that repaired, uh, that is back in service. And I've let every resident know, if they have any branches that they notice in the trees that are browned up prior to the leaf fall, please give us a call. I'm willing to cut them out of the trees. Also, Public Works staff has made several streetlight repairs. Um, 1718 Carol Lane, damaged wire, fall repaired. They repaired seven streetlights. Um, 22348 Nichols Drive, damaged wire due to a Julie call. A resident did not call for a Julie locate. They put their fence in and hid our wire underground. That light is working currently right now. 2150 to 18th Place, a photocell on the top of the light was not working. That is back repaired. 2937 Peachtree, storm damaged wire, um, was pulled down during the storm. Branches fell on the wire. Uh, that has been put back up and repaired. 2241 221st, again, storm damaged, uh, tree fell, ripped down the wire. That wire has been repaired. 21606 Charlotte Court, uh, the light pole, the arm was ripped off, the pole during the storm, and the light head was destroyed. That has been put back up, and that light is back in service. And the final light was 1839 222nd Street, damaged wire. Um, same thing from the storm, was the, the dead wire got pulled loose. Uh, that was repaired, and that went back in service. That was a total of 13 streetlights back in service. Um, next, uh, subject is reading, uh, reading of all water meters for September was completed. Uh, we're about a day behind. We still got them completed by the end of the week. Um, all customer service, all water complaints and appointments, um, are being addressed. So if any resident has a complaint about anything with do with the water inside the house, you just need to make an appointment with the, uh, front desk for a, uh, customer service, uh, person to come out, take a look and see what's going on. Um, we've been discussing for the last month about an EZ valve that we have to insert. Um, the vendor right now is behind on work, so they pushed us off again. They're telling me by the end of the week, they'll have a date for me, um, to put that EZ valve in. This EZ valve, what it is, is a valve that's installed under pressure. It won't disrupt service. But this will make it easier for us to cut out an old fire hydrant that was damaged years ago on Galene and 217th. Um, when we're doing this, we're also gonna replace a main section with a brand-new valve. Um, this will assist us in any other repairs for water main valves and, and pipe. Um, staff dug and straightened a B-box at 224778, uh, so a resident could do a repair. Um, staff has also helped the fire department, police department, and village hall with Miss Lance's work from vehicle maintenance, plumbing, lighting, and HVAC, to name a few. And final thing is, Public Works is still accepting applications apply online. That concludes my report.
Okay. Uh, when you get through with that, could you give a copy to the clerk, please? Well, she's got one. All right, now, community development. I'll read the community development director's report. Uh, enter a community development director's report for September 22nd. Enter Committee Development Director, fourth of September twenty-second, seventeen p.m. board meeting. Met with Kenneth Holden from Green Home Experts, who is interested in presenting before the board or on offering free LED lights through the Combed Energy Efficiency Initiative. Have been selecting pens for the strong community idiom that we can go after to acquire and move to investors, to move to investors and a few that we can rehab on our own. We've submitted our notice of intent to the Cook County for our allotment portion of the Coronavirus Relief Fund in the amount of five hundred and eighty-seven thousand twenty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. I have been working closely with the Finance Director, Michelle Royster, and the administration team to go over receipts and payroll data to finalize the narrative for this application. Have a presentation date for the Homes for a Changing Region Report scheduled by... Scheduled with Jerry, Ed Myers, Maggie Jar on Tuesday, September twenty-second from two to three p.m. Over the last year, the village has been working with the Metropolitan Planning Council, CBAP, and Ida to develop a Homes for a Changing Region Report, which will help the village focus on next steps to address some of our pressing housing challenges. The report was recently finalized and can be emailed to anyone who is interested in reading it. Met with Jordan Novak and Bill Ragland from Safe Built and are streamlining our procedures to become more efficient and effective with our permitting inspections and reporting schedule. And that concludes the report from Antonio Hoop. Next item reports, trustee standing committee, Public Safety Committee, trustee Gary Bell.
No report. We can move on.
Okay. Public Service Committee, trustee relief Brewer.
No report.
Budget and Finance Committee, trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. No report.
Okay. Housing and Governmental Relations Committee, trustee Sheri Gesensky.
No report.
Okay. Ordinance Review Committee, trustee Leonard Ty.
No report.
Public Events Committee, trustee Deborah Waiters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to report that the Saturday food box distribution that the Sauk Village Public Events Committee has been doing for many Saturdays over the past few months is unfortunately on hold right now. The state of Illinois did not receive an allotment from the USDA, which is very disappointing. Other states did receive that allotment, but we are looking for other sources in order to get those free food boxes to continue. So until further notice, the Sauk Village Public Events Committee will not be doing food boxes on Saturday. However, the Southland Voice has reached out to their distributor where they get food boxes through the week, and this Saturday, they were able to secure the food boxes for about eight o'clock on Saturday at the Steger Kmart. At seven o'clock, they will have electronic recycling with unlimited recycling of electronics, including unlimited amount of TVs, which is very unusual because usually when there's an electronic recycling, they only take one TV. Well, first come, first served. You can turn in as many electronics and TVs as you like. And if you are a person who is recycling, you get the choice for the food boxes first. So, because there's a limited amount of food boxes. So, Southland Voice has their Saturday distributions. They may have other distributors to deal with. The Sauk Village Public Events Committee normally does the first, third, and fifth Saturday if there is a fifth Saturday, so we're still looking for other distributors to work with us. So I'm sure I will be able to find somebody. And lastly, the blood drive that was canceled in August, they have contacted me and asked me if we could set it up for October twenty-fourth in the Senior Center. We'll be talking to the Senior Center Director there about that date, and they also asked if we would include Bloom Trail High School, who is looking to do some blood drives as well, and to see if we could combine. Due to COVID, they have an issue with having it within their school. So we are looking to do a blood drive on Saturday, October twenty-fourth, from nine a.m. to one p.m., and we really could use your support on that. This is the time where blood is really, really necessary. A lot of people are not donating right now, but a lot of people are in need right now. So if you have any questions on the blood drive, please feel free to give me a call. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Senior Advisory Committee Chairman, Emmett Farmer? Hope their mic is on. Mayor, trustees. Our next meeting for the Senior Advisory Council is Thursday, October eighth at five p.m. All are welcome. It will be a virtual meeting on Zoom. The link will be posted two days before on our Sauk Village Senior Center information Facebook page. Also, this Thursday, September twenty-fourth at nine a.m., the Senior Advisory Council is having a senior walk. We are meeting behind the village hall and will be walking for about an hour around in the vicinity. Come out and join us, and be sure to wear your mask. Also, social distancing rules will apply. And that concludes my report. Thank you. The business? I'll entertain a motion to approve the payroll and accounts payable disbursements in the amount of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. The move by trustee Bell, second by trustee Williams. Any questions? Madam Clerk, please follow up.
Justice Pard?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Bell?
Yes.
Justice Ford?
Stand.
Justice Grant?
Yes.
Justice Dizensky?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance, amending Article Two of the Police Department of Chapter Forty-two of Law Enforcement of the Municipal Code for Sauk Village to advise for lateral hiring of police officers.
Second.
The move by trustee Bell, second by trustee Dizensky. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Bell?
Yes.
Justice Brewer?
Yes.
Justice Grant?
Yes.
Justice Dizensky?
Yes.
Justice Pard?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation to award a contract, be it for the TIF resurfacing project for the low bidder deconstruction in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I said it. I said TIF.
I know.
But on the, on the, I guess, on the agenda that you got, it said twenty twenty-first COVID replacement. And it's not. It's the two, it's the resurfacing of Sauk Point, right, correct, the resurfacing of for the TIF project over in, over in TIF three. I think that's TIF three and two and three. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Justice Bell?
Yes.
Justice Ford?
Yes.
Justice Grant?
Yes.
Justice Dizensky?
Yes.
Justice Pard?
Yes.
Justice Brewer?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance, to amend the ordinance for the municipal motor fuel tax in the village of Sauk Village.
Second.
The move by trustee Ty, second by trustee Dizensky. Any question? Madam Clerk?
Justice Ford?
Yes.
Justice Grant?
Yes.
Justice Dizensky?
Yes.
Justice Pard?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Bell?
Yes.
Motion carried. Questions? I'm sorry, questions, no, comments. Not questions. Comments from the board of trustees? I'll start with trustee William. Okay, trustee Bell?
Comment.
Trustee Grant?
No comment.
Trustee Ty?
No comment.
Trustee Brewer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to pass a budget on Tuesday if we get all the ordinance in place, so we won't have to go through these changes every year, make sure this stuff is legal and right. So I'm hoping everything will be ready for Tuesday so we can go and approve the budget. That's the end of my comment.
Trustee Dizensky?
No comment.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate, please, guys, come out and patronize. Tell your friends to come out, patronize the corn and dog roast. It's been a while, and we've been in the house with COVID, and we're going to try to make it as safe as possible. Please, wear your mask. Anybody that comes out, please, wear your mask. You know, but come out and try to have fun. I mean, come out and enjoy yourself. The movie, as I stated before, is going to be, what's it? Black Man. When you get older, anyway, just come out and enjoy yourselves. Come out and have fun, invite your friends, invite the family, invite your neighbors. And that's all that I have to say. I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Move by trustee Bell, second by trustee Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.